... members is present, so the meeting of the Board of Education of the School District of New Berlin is called to order. Please call the roll.
Ms. Crosby.
Here.
Mr. Helmer.
Here.
Mr. Kirth.
Here.
Ms. Manley.
Here.
Ms. Scholz.
Here.
Ms. Unger.
Here.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session.
I move to recess into closed session pursuant to Section 19.851(c) and (f) of the Wisconsin statutes to consider (a) the approval of closed session minutes of January 27th, (b) employment, performance, and compensation matters pertaining to staff.
I have a motion by Mr. Kirth and a second by Ms. Manley. Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirth.
Yes.
Ms. Manley.
Yes.
Ms. Crosby.
Yes.
Mr. Helmer.
Yes.
Ms. Scholz.
Yes.
Ms. Unger.
Yes.
Ms. Wundercheck.
Yes.
We are moving into closed session. We will return to open session around 7:00 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 7:00 PM and we are returning from closed session into open session. In recognition of the serious and important nature of our efforts here, we will join in the pledge allegiance to the flag. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for those who wish to prepare for the meeting, we will have a moment of silence. This is a public meeting of the Board of Education. Prior to this meeting, notice was given to the public last Friday by posting the agenda at each district school, the district office, and the city library. The agenda was also posted on the district website. A copy of the agenda was forwarded to the Journal Sentinel, the Wakasha Freeman, and the Wakasha Now, all of which have filed requests for all public notices. The first item on our agenda tonight is the administrative team report.
Yes, we'd like to start with Nishi with the Eisenhower updates.
For an update relating to sports, for the very first time in Ike Dance history, the Eisenhower varsity dance team won two state championships by winning both D2 Jazz and D3 Palm at the La Paque State Dance Championships on Saturday, February 1st. Junior Sam Ludwig sets a new school record of scoring 51 points on January 31st against West Alice Central, contributing to the final score of 102 to 87. And Ike Boys Basketball beats West in overtime with the final score of 78 to 71. For an update relating to activities, the Eisenhower Science Team competed at MSOE and got first, making them state champions. Ike Acdeck won the regional competition and is advancing onto state. Ike Ice Force Varsity Boys Hockey Team defeated the Beloit Memorial Purple Knights 3 to 1 and the Stutton Vikings 7 to 2. Ike Cheer takes first for the small varsity division at Kettle Marine Lutheran. The Unified Cheer Team placed first at the I Cheer competition on Saturday at Greendale High School. And lastly, Ike Forensics takes second place at the Union Grove Tournament.
And then the next update is that of our Elmwood School Update and Building Tour, and then your Elmwood 6th grade student representative Lola will be actually having her update as part of their presentation. You know, as I breathe the air of the halls and library of Elmwood, I reminisce to the days that my daughter Sydney and my son Dominic attended here, K through 6th grade. And so not only am I a proud superintendent of a very high-achieving, blue-ribbon school, but also that of a parent of kids that basically commenced their work here as 6th graders and moved over into Eisenhower. I see, again, not only familiar spaces, but I also see familiar faces, not only just the staff, but also some of the staff that taught my kids, you know. So it's certainly an honor to be here at the neck of the woods over here at Elmwood, and really appreciate you hosting us. We'd like to thank the home and school for the great meal provided to the board and to the admin staff, so thank you very much for that. And then we'd also just like to thank, you know, the staff that are here. Certainly, this looks a little different than the other tours that we've done. You know, we're surrounded by staff and by students and by families, so we're really excited to be here. And so without further avail, I'll hand it over to Katie and Jamie and the rest of the Elmwood team.
Yeah, so good evening. My name's Katie Williams. I'm honored to be principal here at Elmwood Elementary. And with me here tonight is, we have Jamie Veal, our associate principal, and as you can see, tons of our Team Elmwood members here to share out how we continue to roar towards excellence each and every day. So if I can direct your attention to the screens, one of our mottos includes "Leadership is Everyone's Business." By working collaboratively, we are able to achieve excellence. However, excellence is not automatic. It takes dedication, perseverance, and resiliency. So over the past school year, our building leadership teams have explored how we can continue to express gratitude and appreciation as appreciation increases engagement. So tonight, as we share out our students' successes, this is a result of our dedicated staff members each and every day. We would like to recognize and sincerely thank them for their service to our children. Team Elmwood will be sharing out points of pride in relation to student achievement. Specifically, you can see we are headed in the right direction in terms of our bottom quartile and our top quartile of learners and our reading map scores. We would like to highlight our five school beliefs with specific leadership celebrations related to student achievement, academic, social, and emotional. As you will see, students are at the heart of our celebrations of success made possible by our highly dedicated Elmwood staff that we would like to honor with their leadership. So let's look at our first belief. At Elmwood, we believe that all kids can learn. This is evident through our leadership in best-inclusive and co-serving practices. We are proud of our special education team that co-plans and teaches with our teachers and special education assistants. With us here tonight, we have Ally Naporowski, Stacy Alexander, Jamie Schwab, and Chris Reed.
We do believe that all kids can learn, and that's evidenced by our inclusive and co-serving practices at Elmwood. This year, we're really proud that our special education team worked closely with our classroom teachers to ensure that students with disabilities received intentional, individualized, evidence-based instruction that helped them reach the high expectations we hold for all the students at Elmwood. We're also proud that we work closely together as a special education staff to improve our own professional learning community process, to plan for our students with disabilities to acquire and develop skills, knowledge, and dispositions for their entire academic careers at Elmwood and New Berlin School District. We really try to treat our individual caseloads as one and work together to raise achievement for all. And this is how we continue to roar towards excellence at Elmwood.
So let's look at our second belief. At Elmwood, we believe that learning is the work. We're proud of our teachers and how our teachers have guided our students through design thinking and the making process. With us here tonight is our collaborative 4th grade team, Lori Karalek, Darcy Burnfeld, Jennifer Call, along with Jenny Shlee-Reed, our district digital learning coach. We also have a 4th grade student, Sloan Del Ponte, to share her experiences with design thinking and making.
Here I thought the teachers were just getting younger.
Not really. Sorry to disappoint. We believe learning is the work, as evidenced by our design thinking through making at Elmwood. This year, we are proud that throughout a nonfiction reading unit earlier this year, our students had growing concern as they learned how living things were affected by severe weather and natural disasters. This is important because making with a purpose begins with demonstrating empathy. Students brainstormed various problems that occurred during the natural disaster they had studied. Working within partnerships and small groups, students then defined a problem for a specific audience and posed this problem as a question. For example, how might we safely get emergency services to people stranded in a blizzard? The next step was to ideate or brainstorm to come up with various creative solutions. Students researched solutions that already exist, then decided whether they would work to improve upon a current solution or invent something new. After visioning end goals and sketching multiple iterations or options, our students were anxious to begin prototyping in our new maker space. Students shared their sketches and preliminary prototypes with their classmates. They gave each other constructive feedback, including which elements of a design they might keep, add, or change to improve functionality. We continued to bring the students' focus back to their designs, thinking through how their prototype could work and areas they might revise based on feedback they had received. This process went on for several weeks as groups continued to tweak, change, and refine their designs. We held Elmwood's first maker showcase last month. Our 4th grade students had become expert learners on their design and topic. We are so proud of the work they did, and especially of how they presented themselves and responded to questions from families and visitors. As a team, we engaged our students in making with a purpose, with our focus on the entire design thinking process. By developing our students' creativity, collaboration, and communication, we are preparing our learners to be college and career-ready. And this is how we continue to roar towards excellence at Elmwood.
In the maker space, I have learned the whole entire process, including brainstorming, researching, sketching, and making prototypes. This is very important to the whole design thinking and process. Also, getting feedback throughout the whole process was important in case those people were going to use that product. It's really important to make prototypes to best understand how to help others. I know this can help me in the future because the whole process was visual and nice to have right in front of you to know what you're doing, and it helps me understand the end product I want. Also, breaking down each steps helped me best understand the whole process, and I will be able to recreate them in the future of projects I work on. This project helped me manage my time because I had to think about all the parts I wanted to complete. I am most proud of what I made based on the materials that were available, and then I learned from experience. And this is how we continue to roar towards excellence at Elmwood.
Let's look at our third belief. At Elmwood, we believe that every child is my child. This is evident through leadership and multiple collaborations. First, we would like to highlight Jen Call and Chris Reed, our professional learning community leadership chairs, to share their collaborative, school-wide efforts.
We believe every child is my child, as evidenced by our efforts in our growing our professional learning communities at Elmwood. This year, we are proud that we sent a team of representatives to a leading professional learning communities academy. At the academy, we shared our practices with districts across the state. Many districts asked for copies of our practices to implement in their own districts. We clarified and tightened our professional learning community processes for our grade-level teams to help our teachers study student data, reflect on their teaching practices, and leverage the power of their fellow educators so they could raise achievement for all of their students. We are also proud that in a recent survey performed by the Hanover Research Group, 91% of our teachers here at Elmwood said that our PLC process led to them making changes in their instructional practices. In addition, 95% of our teachers agreed or strongly agreed that our PLC has improved student outcomes. And this is how we continue to roar towards excellence at Elmwood.
Secondly, every child is my child is also evident through the implementation of social, emotional learning practices and programming. Melanie Gearhart and Darcy Burnfeld, our social, emotional learning leadership chairs, are here to share their collaborative efforts.
So this year, we had our first annual kindness week focusing on random acts of kindness, positive affirmations, both at school and at home, and incorporating that a part of our citizenship disposition. We continue to promote our PAWS program, recognizing students who go above and beyond by demonstrating outstanding citizenship throughout the school. And then this year, we have started a partnership with HAWS, with our 4th and 5th graders coming in and doing lessons that not only focus on bullying prevention from person to person, but also towards animals. And each week, they have a different theme that they focus on, and the students get really excited about that as well. And we will be donating part of the money that we raised during our Health Moves Minds to HAWS in March because of this partnership, as well as our PlayWorks program during recess has increased the social interactions that we have noticed at recess by creating structured activities for students to choose from. The games have been very inclusive, and the rules are taught and reinforced during physical education classes, and then the students also can bring them into the regular classroom. And all students then feel safe, included, active within these games. And finally, we continue with our Second Step program, incorporating bullying lessons, having common language across the grade levels, and also digging more into extra resources and how we can incorporate those into ours. And this is how we continue to roar towards excellence here at Elmwood.
Let's look at our fourth belief. At Elmwood, we believe in relationships before results. This is evident through leadership and partnerships with our community. First, we have our 3rd grade team, Cindy Colden, Katie Jeskey, Jenna Holford, along with Jenny Shlee-Reed, our digital learning coach, and Kate Stinson, our literacy coach, to share a partnership developed with Clement Manor this year.
We believe relationships come before results, as evidenced by our intergenerational Clement Manor partnership at Elmwood. This year, we are proud that our 3rd graders will be participating in an intergenerational project, a partnership between Elmwood Elementary and Clement Manor Senior Living Facility. Clement Manor is a nonprofit organization located in Greenfield dedicated to offering a variety of services for their clients. The center has experienced a decline in youthful family members visiting residents. As a result of this real-world problem, 3rd grade students at Elmwood will be visiting Clement Manor on several occasions. During our first visit today, students observed the facility, met with staff, and interviewed the residents in order to gain background knowledge on the problem. By the end of the site visits, the students will have developed empathy for these residents and will create a maker prototype that is designed to facilitate memory games and a sense of community for the residents at Clement Manor. And this is how we continue to roar towards excellence at Elmwood.
Secondly, relationships before results is also evident through our continued PlayWorks recess programming. This is our third year of PlayWorks programming and second year of our PlayWorks Junior Coach Program. Our potastic recess team, Heather Zortman, Elaine Gearhart, Stephanie Schneider, Kristy Floriani, who is not here with us tonight, Kelly Owens, and Jen Landry have made this partnership successful. We are proud to have Kelly Owens, a junior coach advisor and student learning assistant, along with Max Erchell, a 5th grader, to share their PlayWorks celebrations.
We believe relationships come before results, as evidenced by our continued PlayWorks partnership at Elmwood. PlayWorks provides an inclusive, safe, fun, and healthy opportunity for play at recess. This year, we are proud that we are continuing to foster a healthier community at recess by eliminating barriers and giving choices. Our students have the opportunity to participate in cooperative games that are not defined by skill level. Students are learning valuable social, emotional skills at recess. We are seeing fewer conflicts and more student-initiated problem-solving. Junior coaches are building leadership skills and serving as positive role models for our youngest students. And this is how we continue to roar towards excellence at Elmwood.
Good evening. My name is Max Erchell, and I am a 5th grade Lion Cup here at Elmwood. This year, we have been working on being junior coaches for our PlayWorks recess programming. I have learned how to work with and lead younger kids, and about time management and adjusting my schedule to lead the younger kids. I know this can help me in my future by teaching me how to be a leader and becoming more confident when working with others. I am most proud of how much fun I have been a leader and junior coach. And this is how we continue to roar towards excellence at Elmwood.
Let's look at our last belief. At Elmwood, we believe that we are a team. This is evident through our partnerships. First, we have advisors Jenna Holford, Kelly Slavik, and Cindy Colden with us to share how they facilitated new opportunities for student leadership this year at Elmwood.
We believe we are a team, as evidenced by our expanding our student leadership opportunities at Elmwood. This year, we added three student leadership groups. H2H, which stands for Here to Help, a technology group; YANA, which stands for You Are Never Alone, an emotional support group; and Elmwood's Book Club to support more in-depth literacy growth. First, H2H, or Here to Help, is a student leadership team that trains 4th through 6th grade students to be experts in different areas of technology. They learn the digital technologies, such as iPad applications and Google G Suite features, in a hands-on experience to support students and teachers in the building. Secondly, this year, we added a student-led group called YANA. YANA stands for You Are Not Alone. This group is made up of members who have decided to take it upon themselves to make sure that no student at Elmwood feels alone at lunch, at recess, or in the classroom. If they notice a student on the playground who is not playing with anyone, they will offer to play with them. Or if a student needs a partner to work with in class, they will offer to be a partner with them. In the cafeteria, YANA members will leave their seat by friends in order to sit by someone who is sitting alone. These students want to be the one who makes a difference at Elmwood. This year, we are proud that 25 4th, 5th, and 6th graders have decided to be a part of this group in our first year. Even though the older kids are the official members because they have been on the Elmwood Today Show, younger kids have started to follow the example set by the older kids, and they are starting to look for kids on the playground who need a friend to play with. This group is led by a small group of very dedicated students. They have given up many lunch and recess times in order to plan meetings and seek out students who have expressed that they are feeling alone. There are plans in place for the older kids to start visiting the younger students to explain how everyone can act like a YANA member. When the younger kids can display a way of helping someone not to be alone, they will become an honorary YANA member. Thirdly, we have Dino Ahmedovic, a 4th grade student and former member of Ms. Colden's 3rd grade classroom, who wanted to start a book club for students who want to read and talk about books. He asked her to be the advisor for this endeavor. In book clubs, students researched possible books, discussed their merits, and were given choice in the selection of the books they would read. Students decided upon the number of pages to be read and then commit to completing this work prior to the next meeting. Ms. Colden supports this endeavor by teaching them roles to deepen their understanding of literature and author's craft. Some of the roles students are learning are discussion direction, literary illuminator, connector, plot profiler, and vocabulary enricher. We are proud that students love to read. We are proud that students want opportunities to collaborate, to work jointly on reading, to reshape their thinking, and to create deeper understandings. We are proud that students will be able to apply the roles learned in book club to other academic situations, and this is how we continue to roar towards excellence at Elmwood.
We have Dino Ahmedovic here to share how he created a new Elmwood Book Club this year.
Excuse me, I do have a cough, but I hope everybody can hear me. Good evening. My name is Dino Ahmedovic, and I'm a 4th grade Lion Cup here at Elmwood. This year, we have been working on expanding our leadership opportunities. I have designed and proposed a book club for 4th graders. The goal of this book club is to help students improve reading skills. We encourage students from all reading levels to sign up and made sure to let everybody know that our book club is a safe space to learn and enjoy books. I have learned that at Elmwood Elementary, our principals and teachers are open to all good ideas and will try to make them happen if possible. My 3rd grade teacher, Mrs. Colden, was instrumental in helping me get our book club off the ground. She assigned each participant a role in our book club so that each one of us feels important and a valued member of the club. I also learned that with the right support, anyone can succeed and anyone can learn how to love to read. Book clubs are more than just fun. They help me and my fellow 4th graders develop critical reading skills that we need for our education. I know this can help me in my future by giving me confidence to speak up again when I have a good idea. It also helps me develop leadership skills that I need someday when I become a CEO. And finally, it helps me expand my friendship circle. I have made new friendships as a result of the book club. I am most proud of the support I'm receiving from teachers and peers. And this is how we continue to roar towards excellence at Elmwood. Do you have any questions for me?
Dino, I have one question for you. Where would you like to be the CEO?
Maybe a company that they found?
That sounds like an excellent choice. Good luck.
Good luck to everyone to follow him.
Our second partnership that exemplifies we are a team are two outstanding parents and leaders of our Elmwood Home and School Association here to share how they make a huge difference for our students and staff. Please welcome Sarah Johns and Tiffany Mercer.
Thank you. We're glad we could be here tonight. We believe that we are a team, as evidenced by our home and school partnership at Elmwood. And this year, home and school are especially proud that we have selected programs that align with school goals, such as the Good Friends Assembly, which included inclusivity education surrounding students with special needs, also by supporting the amazing staff and educators here at Elmwood through various appreciation events throughout the year, through community-building events for students, such as our Fall Fest, All School Skate Nights, Movie Nights, our Spring Dance, and High Interest Day. We're very proud that we are able to offer our High Interest Day activities free for all students and include a variety of workshops to provide the most inclusivity for students of all abilities.
This year, we are also proud that we have been able to continue to support literacy in our Elmwood classrooms and library. Each year, home and school host and staffs two scholastic book fairs. Based on sales, we earn scholastic dollars that can be used to purchase books as well as other items. For many years, this has allowed us to give every student in the school a free book for their own personal collection, as well as provide dozens of books for the classrooms and libraries. We are also proud to encourage creativity and growth in thinking and learning skills for today and for the future. An example is one of our recent Artists in Residence Program, where every student in the school worked with artist Marina Lee, as well as our art teacher Julie Ibar, to conceptualize, design, and create many of the art pieces that you'll see tonight during your tour. We are also proud to support the creation and expansion of Maker Space, giving teachers even more tools to reach our students where they are now and move them forward. And this is how we continue to roar towards excellence at Elmwood.
We want to thank you for being here this evening and having the opportunity to hear from our students, parents, and staff that make Elmwood special. Their leadership, passion, and love for our students is why Elmwood continues to roar towards excellence. Katie and I continue to be grateful and appreciative of our school, district, and community. We would like to invite you right now on a tour of Elmwood. If you would like to join us, we're going to exit out of these exit doors here into the hallway. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry?
Teacher's pet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are we back online at all?
There was an issue and I don't know because they're not broadcasting from here. So they're recording it, which is not lying. Try.
Everybody can get one, so if you want one for yourself.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are returning from our school tour. The next item on the agenda is privilege of the floor. This portion of the meeting is an opportunity for you to come and voice your concerns to the board. So please do not be offended when we quietly listen, we may even take notes. We do not immediately respond to your questions and comments, this is a time for you to talk and for us to listen. Thank you for coming to voice your comments and concerns. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone, address the chair, and state your name and address. Each presentation is to be restricted to a maximum of three minutes. Privilege of the floor will be limited to one half hour. Presentations are not to be designed for purposes of engaging others in debate in this forum. Discussion of certified classified or professional personnel or of individual board members shall not be considered an appropriate topic for this forum and will be ruled, speaker will be ruled out of order. So we have Chris Motz.
Hi, everyone, Chris Motz of South Garen Pass. And what a fantastic presentation this evening here at Elmwood. About a year ago, there was another fantastic presentation that many of us saw. And that was a presentation put together by Chris Lynn and Amy, I believe, on open enrollment. And over the past few meetings, all that work that was put together and presented came to now having an open enrollment policy, which I think is a great thing for the school district of New Berlin. While it's very good, I know that 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 presentation showed that there was some excess capacity here. And it showed a way to kind of fill that gap, much like a business would do if they had excess inventory or production space. It found where those seats were for open enrollment, both at the elementary and at the high school level. And it put together a good way to fill those spots. Now, in the event that there is, you know, a need for more teachers down the road because, you know, whatever happens, let's keep in mind, it isn't because of open enrollment, it's just because of the operating environment. And so I just wanted to lay that out. And as far as measuring success, I think, I don't think that anything really needs to be done differently other than continuing to measure the success of any of the students. These are just students, there isn't going to be anything different that needs to be measured. One thing that, you know, I would have liked to have seen is that high school open enrollment also to be approved. Give you a little story, a few weeks ago, my older sister and brother-in-law attended an Eisenhower basketball game. And it got me to thinking, they're a family from Franklin. Now, their kids, K to eight, attended a private school in Greendale. And as they were getting ready to proceed on to high school, they had choices, they had options. This family, they could send them to any private school or to Franklin. But for them, the best choice was Greendale. And so those kids now, they're grown up. One of them's a senior at Marquette. And this girl, she does internships in summer, she goes down to third world countries to make life better for people there. My nephew, he is now a CPA. And the oldest, my niece, she works for a large manufacturer, a great company. And she and her husband and their two children, today, they own and live in a home in Greendale. Okay, so you see, the benefits of an open enrollment policy, they may not be able to be measured, you know, this year or next year. But the benefits are certainly there. And the taxpayers, which they are now a part of, are going to benefit from this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the president's message. I just, everybody's gone, but I want to reiterate what Superintendent Garza said. We just really appreciate Elmwood, you know, the taking the time to give us a tour and give us an update. And thank you for the home and school. This is our third school tour, and I'm enjoying the tours. I think the whole board is enjoying the tours and being able to see the different schools. So we look forward to the remaining three schools that we have, three schools that we have left. Next item is the superintendent update.
Yeah, I did want to clarify that we are experiencing technical difficulties. So we are not broadcasting live, but we are recording. And so we'll certainly work out whatever issues we we need to for future satellite events. But just wanted to let you know that that's what's happening. As, you know, last Friday, as was mentioned in the presentation, as part of our college and career readiness series, not only do we have events at our middle and high schools, but we also have events here at our elementary schools. And that was Jumping to Your Future Day, which was a partnership with Junior Achievement. And as mentioned, you know, we have involvement with the home and schools, our own staff, parent volunteers, community volunteers, and again, folks from Connected with Junior Achievement. And another great event, you know, occurred here. We've already had a couple already happen at the other elementary schools. But we also have things like Biz Town for all of our fifth graders. And that's an event that's held at Junior Achievement in Menominee Falls, where students have the opportunity to essentially apply for a job, get a job, work a job, manage their finances, and kind of learn the ins and outs of what it means to somewhat be an adult with responsibilities. And again, that's just part of the varying different events that we have. What I really appreciate about the presentation tonight is that, you know, we've we've strived to utilize our strategic plan and our strategic goals and that of preparing our students for the future and just recognizing the fact that it does start with the building blocks in kindergarten and prior to that and all the way through. And that we had, we'd not always done the best job of articulating that as a district. But I think you heard some of the evidence tonight of how, you know, you heard, you know, the the young man, I think, fourth grader, you know, talking about how his his work with the book club will, you know, enhance his leadership skills to someday be a CEO. Right, and so the the conversation is changing. And it's changed in a great way that it's now not just, you know, on a on a plan or on a document, but it's actually coming out of the the mouths of our staff, our parents, and especially our kids. And, you know, the fifth grade student with, you know, that's that's the junior leader for the structured recess. Again, I mean, these are, these are fourth and fifth graders. And and again, it it's just, it's great to be able to hear it come directly from them. And not just from, you know, people like Nishi who are ready to rock and roll to their future. You know, we've held dignitaries here and we've had high schoolers talk. You're now hearing that lingo come from the the mouths, you know, of our students at the elementary school. So I I think it's a testament to to our work, to the to our staff, to our great leadership, you know, here at Elmwood and to our teaching staff. And so, you know, just, again, it's it's, you know, when I mentioned things like Jumping to Your Future, they're not just events. These are just part of our process and what we do as a school district. So I did want to make a final push for the sold-out event that's being sponsored by the Education Foundation of New Berlin. And that is the 50 Years of Eisenhower Celebration, that's next Saturday. And I'm proud to say that it's sold out with, I think, three weeks, three, four weeks to spare. Again, I'd like to thank Chris Lynn and Kate and Susan for their generosity and and for the rest of the board that may be involved. I am willing to sell a couple tickets for a for a very high premium price. So if you're interested, let me know. And all proceeds will go back to the foundation, so I'm not just to our guards. And then again, at that event, there will be a special program for the ICA Athletic Hall of Fame. And so again, I think it's going to be a great, great event that's going to just kind of, I think, it'll be, put the foundation on the map that they're able to kind of pull some things together. I'm really looking forward to it. So that that is the, my administrative team report.
Thank you, the next item is the committee update. Again, we have three committees that we've been running since this summer, I think, from about May timeframe. So we have a facility committee, finance committee, and a personnel committee. At this meeting, we're going to get an update from the facility committee.
Heard my name 10 times.
Teamwork.
All right, the facilities committee has been meeting about once a month for a few months now. The two main topics of an LED lighting and the long-range facilities plan. Please inter- Oh, I was going to aim at Joe, I was, but it's the pointer.
Ready, click.
Please interrupt me with any questions, I don't want to drone on and lose people, this is meant to be an interactive conversation. The purpose of this presentation is to gain support from the board to use Fund 50 and Fund 10 to upgrade the kitchen and cafeteria lighting to LED in all the schools. Fund 50 is a separate fund, not part of our general fund, so spending that money does not negatively impact our budget deficit. The director of food and nutrition, Ms. Jensen, runs Fund 50. She is the reason why we can have this conversation today. She runs a cash flow positive operation which has saved $1 million. Roger actually told me she's, she has saved so much money that she, the DPI is actually requiring her to spend that money down. I met her once about a year ago, I think it was right before or right after I got elected. And she was one of the most upbeat, out-of-the-box-thinking people I've ever met. She leads a cooperative collaborating with other districts' food programs to ensure we get the best price on food, which is one of the reasons why we built up the surplus. Because the cafeteria is used for multiple functions, DPI uses up, lets us use Fund 50 to pay for upgrades in it. The question has been raised, why are we replacing something that isn't broken? The current lights are about six years old, with an average total lifespan of about eight years. So the answer to the question is, the lights will need to be replaced relatively soon if we don't do this. We'll have to buy more of the current bulbs and replace the failing fixtures. Comments, questions? There are three main options when moving to LED lighting. Option one is replace the bulbs and leave the current fixtures. This gives us somewhat shortened life because the fixtures can go bad and you're stuck with light bulbs that wouldn't migrate to the new, the new fixtures. There is an energy savings, it's not as high as the other two options, it's about 35 to 45%. All of these percentages range, so you can go and research them and everyone's got a different opinion, so they're all different. There's a few less options, there's not remote control and some of the remote dimming options. My comparison for this is it's a 10-year-old Honda Civic. I drove a 24-year-old Toyota Camry, so I'm okay with driving a 10-year-old Honda Civic. This is a quick fix. A good application for this is if you're renting a building, the fixtures are brand-new, you don't have a maintenance staff, you just don't have the expertise to do this properly. I'm not opposed to this in some areas, I just think option two is a better option. So option two is replace and modify all the fixtures and the bulbs. You get the full life of 50,000 hours out of these bulbs, which is about 20 years. But again, that depends, if you use them in the cafeteria, it's probably 14 years. If you use them in a classroom, it's probably closer to 20. You get the full 50% energy savings, there's again, some less options, this is the new Toyota Camry. This is the best total lifecycle cost for LED lighting that I've seen. And option three, this is a lighting control system, it basically takes two and gives you added functionality. The cool thing with, this is the coolest option, when you scan your badge, lights can turn on, it can be set to be programmed to your badge. So half the lights come on, they come on at 30%, they can dim at certain times in your classroom. The problem is, they dim in your classroom and you might not be able to control that, or they don't turn on when you need them. So someone has to manage the system, you need IT to program the controllers, set the programs, change the programs. If you need software updates, you've got to pay a company to come in here and do that. You've got to make sure you're secure on all of this stuff too, because you have wireless communications between it. There's a lot of factors to think about with a solution like this. Option two, this is a standard business case for the costs and savings of this project. I only did one detailed breakdown to simplify this. There wasn't much purpose in showing options one or three, in my opinion, you'll see why in a minute. This scenario right here shows what Elmwood would like, look like if we did it. At last count, there was 2,292 light bulbs, 1,025 fixtures. If we replace all of those, that cost would be 27, at $7 a bulb and $11 a fixture, that cost would be $27,000. The current lighting energy cost that I pulled from the last report I saw was $37,000. If we get a 50% energy reduction from that, that would be $18,000. Again, again, the total cost is 27. If we use Fund 50 at 30%, which is about what we would use, I'll, this is a little confusing, I'll explain this in a second, why this is part of the calculation. But that would take $8,000 of that cost and shift it to Fund 50. The cost after Fund 50 would be $19,000, and the annual savings again is $18,000. So the payback would be just over a year.
So the $19,000, where does that come from?
Sorry. The $19,000 would come from Fund 10. From a regular budget.
Thank you.
So the bulb and fixture cost, are that, is that the cost of the material itself, or is that a cost for installation?
That's cost for material alone. The assumption is we would use our current staff to do this because it would just be the cafeterias, it's not doing it district-wide. We don't have the staff to do every school all at once. That would be a lot of hours. So that's where I, I only had the numbers to put this business case together for Elmwood. But if you take this and swap in and you replace it with all of the cafeterias, the number of lights won't be correct. But when you replace a light, it is a, it's a direct relation. So there's, there's only three factors that go into it. It's cost of energy, energy used by the light, and the hours used. So the goal is to pick the least effective lights, and they're almost all the same light. They're mostly T8 lights, which are fluorescent lights. You can't affect the rate we pay, we can't go to We Energy and negotiate that. So that's fixed. So the only thing you can do is change the hours used and the energy used by the bulb. And so this program right here would reduce the consumption of energy.
No, so I know that We Energy, sometimes they have, they have plans and sometimes they have programs when you do an energy-efficient update. So has that been looked into? The, it used to be focused on energy, I'm not sure if it's still considered focused on energy. But whenever there's an update of some sort, a lot of times they come in and they have funds where they can actually assist you with that. I think we took advantage of that years ago, but I'm not sure if that would still apply. Do you know if that would still apply?
There is a state rebate, so the rebate is, it's factored in this cost. The quote was $9 per bulb with a $1.50 rebate, bring them down to $7.50. And the facilities director believed that there is, he thought if we bought in a larger quantity, 2,000, 5,000 bulbs, excuse me, we'd be able to get those down to $7. And so this cost here, there's two different ways to do this, and I don't want to bore everyone. But we can replace the fixtures and put in new bulbs, and there's different technologies. Or we can modify these fixtures, leave the current fixtures in, and just put new bulbs in. So there's two different ways to do that. No, so it's, the the first option is you just take a bulb and stick them in there, and you're good to go. The second option, there's two options within option two, is you can cut a piece of material out of that light and then put new bulbs in there. Or you can replace the whole fixture and put new bulbs in there. Option, so there's two options within option two. If maintenance determines that the fixtures are good and we don't, we just snip the, snip the ballast, is what it's called out of there, which is what powers these lights, if we just snip that out and they put lights in and they believe that's good, that's their decision to make, I'm okay with that. So a school like Elmwood where you have a brand-new, or newer school, that would probably work. A school like Eisenhower, I don't know when those fixtures have been replaced, we don't have any data on that, is what I asked for. So that school, maybe you do replace those. When you do replace them, you gain a couple points of energy, it's not much. Because you're then taking the driver out of the bulb and putting the driver in the fixture. And then that powers the bulbs. I'm boring everyone, I'm sorry with the- The, the new fixture is $11. You don't put a new ballast in, you just run them offline energy. So there is no ballast then. So it's just the, it's- So essentially, the estimates I've seen are 15 minutes to do the clip and put new bulbs in, and about a half an hour to replace the fixture. Again, everyone's got an opinion on that, I don't know exactly where those would fall. So these numbers, again, are based on all of Elmwood. So that's taking a classroom that doesn't get used, or a teacher's lo, or teacher's lounge that's used intermittently off and on. So this is based on $16 per light. Looking at cafeterias like Eisenhower, it's probably on at 5:00, 6:00 AM when food service gets in, and it's off at 10:00, 9:00? I don't, I mean, and it's used six days a week, 200 and some days. So those are going to be the highest payback for it. And then again, so that's where that Fund 50 came in, so that's where that 30% came in. So I didn't want people to think we're doing Elmwood, the proposal is to do the cafeterias. Cafeterias and food prep, so where all the food is made as well. That's Elmwood, so-
Just for an example.
But I mean, if we, so if we spend, so right now, what does our spend for this, $19,000? If we spend $30,000, the payback is expected to be $30,000. It's supposed to be pretty much dollar for dollar is what the expectation would be.
One more question, on the-
Ask away.
Between the two and, option two and three. Is there a way to, when you place the fixtures, to be option three ready? Like, not do that, but the fixture would be ready for it?
So there's multiple different ways to do option three? And there'll be new, more options coming out too? So the lowest-cost option is to always have the least amount of equipment and sensors right now, because sensors are expensive. So you'd have like one per three or four classrooms. But then you have to wire all of that back to the centralized control of that. So the, the good thing with option two is you get, so right now, we spend 28- Sorry? But you spend eight to 15 times what you do for option two, so-
Do you want to say how much option three was?
Option three was $400,000, I think, was that right?
Instead of the- That's a little different.
That was also for Elmwood.
That was Elmwood.
And I noticed that the Calac Escalade was used as an example, and I know that is far less reliable than the Toyota. And they, I have a friend who has one, and it's always breaking, and it always costs a lot more just because it's an Escalade.
And that's, I mean, a lot of companies and places do go to that three option, but you get almost all of the savings. So which, we have, we have occupancy sensors in most of the classrooms, so when they're not being used, they're turned off. So I mean, you get some extra remote dimming capabilities, and again, you can set all those programs, but someone has to own that. I mean, we've talked before that we, we're short on IT resources right now, so who owns that then? Is that IT, is that maintenance, is that?
So you're, so basically, I think you're-
Sorry, hold on, one, let me, I didn't get to your question. So the answer is, I believe we can. I'm sure there's some things we could do to help make that more accommodating. In the future, like, when you buy a bulb in your house, you can put a bulb in there and you can have it go to your sensor and you can turn them on or off, or your Alexa, so, but those bulbs are $10 versus a $1 standard LED bulb, so, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's great, so you're saying that there's no, there's no downside to doing this option two as far as the payback is concerned, because we'd be laying out cash from a fund that is at a surplus? Part, part of, because we can't do it all out of-
Part of that would be Fund 10.
Because it's not, because it's a shared space, it's not just for food prep, and that's what Fund 50 has to be-
And that 30% is an estimate, I, we'd have to figure that, it could be more, it could be less.
Yeah, how do we ultimately figure that out, Mitch?
Patrick would have to work with-
Oh, okay.
DPI to come up, or food service would probably have to work with that calculation of, when is it used for food, food service, and when is it used for not food service?
So how do we, as a board, get the full picture of what it would, what the cash outlay would be if we did it in every cafeteria? Like, what information do we need in order to make sure that we know what decision we're making? Because giving us an example is really helpful to give us an example, you know, what we're kind of looking at. But, I mean, I don't know about everybody else, but I kind of feel like I need to know like what, what the full picture looks like in all the cafeterias. If, because that's what I think you're proposing, right?
My, my assumption was, the lights in Elmwood, the 2,200, my guess is that's probably pretty comparable to all the cafeterias. I think it'd probably be a little bit bigger if you took all the cafeterias, as opposed to just the-
I just have no idea.
I was, I was laying in bed thinking, I'm like, if you stack them on top of each other, how does it look?
Yeah, I have no idea, because the cafeteria spaces around our district are all so different.
Oh, and the high schools are obviously much larger than the grade schools.
And so I guess, I guess I would like, I mean, I really like this idea, and I think that it's a, it's a, it's a proactive idea to try to, you know, move us forward. But I think that as a board, we probably need to know, you know, the six cafeterias we're talking about, what is that? What are those composed of, what are the actual numbers, and what are we agreeing to as far as a project?
So it would be the cafeterias, and then it would be the food preparers.
Right, I'm sorry.
So Fund 50 would be entirely food prep.
Yep.
And then cafeterias would be that mixed model.
That split space, and then we have to figure out from DPI where the calculation would have to be so that we would know what the impact was to us, out of non-Fund 50 resources, right? Okay.
Yeah, because we need to know, we need to know what we're pulling out of the budget, what we're budgeting.
So the other factor we have to think about too though is, if we don't do this, then we've got to replace these lights. So these lights are-
Right, we have cost.
These are low, so LED lights are, again, $7, $8, and these lights are $2 or $3, whatever the cost is, but that's a cost. And then, so we, once we do the cafeterias, you should never have a maintenance person on a ladder or on a lift touching a light in there for 15 years, 20 years, or 12 years, however long those last, so. It frees up, so they do have to spend more time initially doing that, but long-term, it should free that time up so that they can do other stuff.
I, I like this idea, it's an innovative idea, and it's a proactive idea, and I like proactive solutions to, you know, looking at problems down the road. And so I think that that's, so I think that's great, I just think we need a little more information maybe so that we can make a sound decision as a board about what it is that we're proposing and what we're talking about and how that shakes out for the whole budget, since only part of it can come out of 50. So if all of it could come out of 50, I think it'd be a lot easier, so, you know.
Well, and on that note, I mean, I, that's where I would like to have the director of food and-
Cindy Jensen.
Yeah, Cindy Jensen, do Fund 50, I think, give her the tools to be able to do that, because that's her, that's her world. She lives that, and let her run that. So if you guys, I mean, it sounds like you guys want a little more information on that. So if, if the board supports it, I'd like to work directly with the facilities and food directors to get this proposal finalized. I know Patrick has said that he's a little bit crunched on capacity, and I think we all agree, the number one priority for us is getting that software conversion done, and I'd like to- make sure that he's got bandwidth on that. And Cindy obviously has proven she can manage her budget pretty well. And the facilities director just got back from a two-day LED conference, so. He should be primed and ready to-
That's great.
Start making decisions.
I would recommend that all the work be done through my office and Patrick's office directly, just so that we follow the organizational chart and respect, you know, Patrick's authority in order to get this done, and not have a board member working directly with two of our directors.
Do we, do we need to continue this discussion and like just continue working on the facility committee? Or do you feel that you, the committee is ready to move, just get the direction, or get the final documentation?
For final cost?
Yeah, final cost, is it something that you want to work on, or just bring it back to the next facility? I guess, Joe, what, what, do you think that there's time, the next time we have a facility meeting, that to have some information being brought back?
I guess we would need direction from the committee that, you know, I'm not, you know, obviously, this is a recommendation, it sounds like from Mitch, but is, you know, I don't even know if the committee's in full support of it?
I'm in full support of it.
Okay.
I agree.
I am not.
Could you explain why?
I think, based on our discussion last week, the facilities committee, the, the general consensus was overall, we were not, this was not actually what I thought we were going to be presenting tonight. These numbers are primarily Mitch's numbers. These numbers are primarily Mitch's numbers, not anything that we've gotten from Andy.
There, well...
So not that we, the count of bulbs is from him, and some of the costs of the lighting is from him, but we didn't, there's no actual labor cost on here. I mean, I feel like this is a little bit premature. We have discussed it, but we hadn't really gotten it to this point of being a formal proposal to the board, so. And we also had been talking about full buildings and not only just the cafeteria areas, so.
Is there a reason why you'd want to do the full building?
No, I definitely do not support the full buildings. I just thought that that was kind of what we had talked about last week.
Do you have another proposal that brings in $354,000 in savings?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I just don't trust that this is truly the savings, because these are your numbers and not any actual numbers that we've reviewed with Andy.
The bulbs and fixture costs came from Andy, with the cost of bulbs and fixtures. The current energy lighting cost came from a proposal that we got as a bid from a company that was willing to guarantee those numbers. So they were willing to guarantee $18,000 in the proposal that was done a few years ago. I doubled that, because I assume that's a 50% savings, which would be the $37,000.
But that assumes that we don't pay anything to install them, and that our current staff can install 2,200 bulbs at 15 minutes per fixture, or 30 minutes per fixture if they're going to replace them. There's, that doesn't seem like that's a zero-cost effort to me.
So, let me...
So I'm not saying I won't ever support it. I just am not in support of this, because we, as a committee, did not review this information before this presentation.
Mitch talked about this at our last meeting. He laid out the numbers. He just didn't have them in a, you know, a very nice visual for us at that time, but I mean, these were the numbers that he did talk about.
He did, and Andy did not agree to them. And unfortunately, he's not here to speak for himself.
Unfortunately, he's not here, but I don't recall him totally disagreeing with the numbers.
So on the proposal that was given, I believe, facilities gave it to Joe from the last proposal that we got quotes on, it said, "I believe our maintenance staff could install the new lights in maybe one or two of the elementary schools per year, but someone else would have to do the two high schools." So that was a statement a couple of years ago. I don't know if that...
So maybe, based on what Chris Lynn said, and then, you know, certainly Kate too, can you guys go back as a committee and look at the numbers, and then come back when you guys have a consensus or a direction, and get Andy's buy-in to the final? Because this is just a subset, which is great, right? It says our savings, but I think we need more information.
Right now, Andy is on vacation. When he returns from vacation, what I can have him do is get a couple of quotes to do the work in, since we've been talking about Elmwood, do the work in the Elmwood cafeteria and kitchen, and see what the numbers come back with.
Yeah, I think we're keeping on moving forward, which I think is good, you know? And I think that getting some solid numbers that also, I'm also, I'm a little bit concerned about the installation costs. I know what you're saying, Mitch, about like that staff can do it. I just, I don't know that they've ever had to do something that scale before, you know, so.
So the, I broke down the math. So 20 minutes a light, it's 338 hours, which would be 42 days of work. And I think we have between 15 and 20 maintenance staff. So that's about two days of the year.
We have two.
So...
Two.
Two just here, at Elmwood?
No. Maintenance and facilities, right?
The maintenance people. The maintenance people that would do this type of work, we had three, one retired, and he wasn't replaced. We have two.
Okay. So we have to think about, and, you know, I understand your point, Mitch, and I think that, you know, I want to try to get us to the place where we can, you know, save some money, because I think this is a good idea. I think that we do have to remember, though, that when we take our current existing staff and take them away to do something else, that then they can't get done something that they're, we're supposed to probably do at that time. Do you know what I mean? So they can't be in two places at one time, so we've got to factor that into what, you know, what we're doing here. But I think that, you know, the idea is a good idea. I just think that we need some more information, and then maybe you guys, as a committee, can kind of come together around what the proposal is and have more of a consensus. And I think we'll, I think we'll get there. I think that this is a really, really good proactive idea, so. But I think we just have to, we just have to, you know, keep moving ahead.
And then you had the long-range plan on there as well. So that's another portion that you guys have been talking about?
Yeah. No, that's, well, so one of the outputs was that we've all been kind of struggling with what I think is a priority, what Janet thinks is a priority, and what Kate thinks is a priority, and what Andy and Pat do, and what does the board want? Do you want a list of, so this is what I kind of laid out. We want to bring something tangible to the board. We don't want to just go back and forth, if we should bring this, we should bring this, and then we get this hodgepodge thing of that no one wants. So I just put four ideas up on the board of kind of things that we were talking about, and what you guys read through them and give us some feedback on what you guys are looking at for this.
Yeah, you know, this is one of those, those difficult conversations that we have to keep putting off, right, because of budget. And so, you know, my position is, look at the needs, not the wants. But how do you define that? I don't know if that has been defined, or if that's part of the angst of the process. But, you know, in the past, we've looked at safety, right, as our number one. That becomes a need, not a want. And again, I don't know what rigor's been done around that, so that would be my question, I guess.
No, we've been focusing mostly on needs, definitely in the group, but it's just a matter of, you know, looking at the roofing and the paving, was sort of like, we put that in its own category itself, because those are all things that are needs. And then we looked at anything else, and then we were ranking them, we were trying to rank them most by safety and those types of issues. And then I think our last plan was, we were going to come and try to combine the two and rank them. But I mean, it's been a lot of back and forth with that, so. And I guess it's the purpose of like, well, why are we making this list? Why are we ranking them? What are we gonna, what are we gonna do with it? And that's why Mitch put together like four ideas, like what's the purpose of this list?
And so, when we just looked at the ideas last meeting, a lot of the highly ranked ones were like building a wall in a library so that they can section it off and have more classroom space, or educational space. And I had a little bit of problem with that, because we just said that we have enough capacity in all of our buildings to consolidate schools. But now we're going to put more money into creating more spaces, and I, I have a hard time with that. If we've committed and said that we can do that, how is that a priority to us? And I wanted to get some feedback. So, for example, my ranking is safety. Fixes that are $10,000 that aren't fixed could be a million dollars, like a foundation or a water leak, something like that. New educational opportunities, construction classes, stuff like that. And then roofs, and then extra space possibly, and drive areas, parking lots, like those fall lower on that list for me, but...
I just have a question for the committee. So, because this is, I'm not really sure how to get my hands around this issue either, you know, because it's like, you know, it's kind of complicated. But my question is, have you guys had any opportunities or reached out to any other school districts, and even Patrick, having just come from Shorewood, about how they handle long-range facilities? Because I feel like, sometimes I feel like we're reinventing the wheel, when I think that other people, you know, in successful districts may have ideas to contribute to what we're struggling with. So it might be, I don't, I don't know if you've already done that sort of inquiry, or thought about that, and talked to Patrick maybe about his experience in Shorewood, about this sort of, because it's a ranking. You basically have to develop a, right?
I think what's critical is regardless of what district you're in, you need to identify what the priorities are.
Right, right.
And so it doesn't matter which district you're going to be talking to.
Okay.
They have agreed on what the priorities will be, and it doesn't sound like that's been necessary. I don't think at the board level, or even at the committee level, it's been determined. And so, you know, I think the criteria needs to be determined in order for us to be able to move forward. And I think what's, you know, why are we doing this? It's so that we can determine what the five-year budget forecast will be. And so, for Patrick and I's planning, this is absolutely critical. You know, I've been given a directive to provide a forecast to the board by June. There are a lot of levers that need to move up and down within that forecast, and one of them is our facilities planning. And that's a big one, because we do know we have millions of dollars of needs, you know, in just paving and roofing alone. And, you know, again, it's just, you know, what Janet mentioned, you know, those are things that could be set aside. Mitch, you know, maybe some are not a priority, and so again, you know, I think, you know, most certainly, those are the critical pieces that need to be determined, but again...
Sorry, and with that, not only understanding what are the priorities, but then, what do we do with the priorities? Do we give you guys, do we just go through 50 of them? Do we pick out, you know, $500,000 a year?
But see, that's where I feel like other districts could possibly be helpful, because I think, I agree with you, Joe, that we have to determine what our overarching priorities are first. I mean, for my purposes, I think safety is the most important, number one important thing on any facilities list that I could look at. I think...
And then it's just defining safety. So for example, so for example, you know, you're going to look at the purple sheets, and I'm not going to publicize what's on the purple sheets, but someone could interpret what's on there as a security issue and a safety issue. And so, you know, is that a priority for, you know, is that considered a priority? You know, so it's safety, does that include security? So there are many layers to it. So again, sure, I can call Elm Brook and say, hey, what's your priority? Safety. Okay, well, how do you define that?
But I'm not, I don't think that we need to ask them what priority is. I feel like we need to ask them how they have this conversation around, you know, how do you catalog it? Do you know what I'm saying? Because I think that that's, that's something that I don't think that we know how to do as a board and as a committee. So I think that that might be instructive. I do, I really believe in collaborative learning. I think that we really do need to talk to some other people who have done this before. Our committees are new. And I think that, you know, I appreciate your point, but I do think that it might be fruitful, but, you know, I leave that to your discretion.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, at our last meeting, we talked about doing like a needs assessment, trying to figure out, because, you know, where we're struggling is, we don't have money to fund a lot of this stuff. So it's hard to say we're going to come up with a five-year plan when we don't really have any money to come up with a five-year plan. But what we want to look at is, or I want to look at, I'll use myself, is what are the things we need to do in the next five years that we have to stop ignoring, because they're going to lead to larger issues in the future, or the costs are just going to, you know, grow and grow and grow astronomically if we don't do them? I mean, I think the board has voted the last few years to not fund the long-range facilities plan. And what I would like to do as a facilities committee is basically bring back the evidence that we have to stop doing that. Somehow, we have to stop doing that. And there are things that we need to do, roofing and paving being number one, which I think we all did agree in the committee, that those are things that we need to start addressing. And what we really were trying to do is look at the rest. So, I don't know, that's my two cents, and I thought we were a little more aligned than it sounds like we were. I feel like we all sat in a completely different meeting last week.
I guess the question that I would ask is, you know, unfortunately, as board members, you do all have full-time jobs, and our full-time jobs are to do this work. And so ultimately, my question would be is, would you trust that Patrick and Andy could bring a recommendation to the committee, and then eventually to the full board? Because right now, I'm not sure that that is occurring. And so...
Yes.
That would be a typical situation, whether it's hiring, whether it's curriculum and instruction, whether it's food service. It would be coming from the ground up to the board. And so I guess I would ask if that's something that, because, you know, certainly, we can have committee meetings once a month, or however often the committee's meeting, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done that I don't believe will get done, and that timely of a fashion in order for us to work backwards from getting a forecast to the board in June.
So Andy did do that. I mean, Andy put together this for all of the schools, so we have something similar to that. So we could send that to the board and have them all review that, I think. That was probably the most productive thing that came out of the long-range.
Yeah, so we basically have like a one-to-two-year plan at this point, and where we're struggling, I think, is getting that further to five years, because we really need to not just look at what are the immediate needs that we're doing this summer, but what are the things that are going to be coming, and things that we need to be doing, and figuring out where the money's going to come from to pay for those things.
Yeah, so my question for Patrick. The last meeting, we were discussing budget, and we have given nothing to the maintenance for the last three years. And the future budgets that we have planned for the next five years had given no money to the facilities as well. My question is, is there's a list of $500,000 a year? Do we have $500,000 a year that we can move to that? Because it says we're going to try to do that, but there hasn't been a discussion, because the last discussion's been, we have no money to give to maintenance.
Jeff, if I could touch on that just briefly, in fact, this is...
If I miss something, let me know.
Well, this is something that actually Amy has mentioned previously, and I believe Kate may have as well, is that it may not just be about dollars being found within the budget that we, currently, we're not projecting out, but what if we have a surplus like we've had in the years past? So that, you know, for example, if we trend positively with our health insurance, or we get reimbursed, you know, unexpected reimbursements like we did to the tune of almost over a million dollars a couple of years ago, should we have something like that happen? And, you know, right now is the time that we need to be getting out quotes for summer work. Otherwise, it's going to get more expensive. That we have a list to fall back on, so that, you know, should, you know, yeah, we could come to the board and say, this is what we're doing, or we're going to tell the facilities committee that this is what we're doing, but hey, the board has approved up to this much work, say, up to a million dollars, you know, we'll project out a half million dollars a year, but should, you know, we get some sort of windfall or unexpected dollars from the state like we just got? So it's not just about digging into our current coffers. And then we also do have fund balance. Now, that's something that the board may want to consider utilizing, and so it's not just always coming out of the general fund. We can also, you know, I know that Patrick and I have been talking about, you know, should we be setting aside dollars like, say, the $100,000 from the solar energy, or like Mitch is talking now with the energy efficiency, and we're, you know, say we save, you know, another $100,000 annually, you know, that we automatically move those dollars instead of to like the general fund? We move it in a capital improvement fund, so that those dollars will just, it's understood that this is where the money's going to be spent. spent. And so, you know, again, I, I hope that answers your question, Jeff, at least. You know, I don't mean to speak on behalf of Pat, but we've been discussing this, you know, quite often. This is a big, this is a kind of a big directive that we need. And, and time is of the essence at this point for us, or at least for this coming summer, should there be work? And again, should we have, uh, an opportunity, for example, you're going to hear tonight, that, uh, that the audited numbers have come back, and we will have additional dollars in the reserves. You know, so to the tune of roughly, Patrick, $750,000. Our auditor's here, so we gotta be-
What the auditor, what the auditor is going to show you that it's about $1.2 million, but that's because it's a, a moment in time.
And then you take the Ike wall out of there?
The Ike wall comes out of that, yeah.
But, you know, so we, we will have dollars even now, that, that were unexpected. I mean, we expected them, now they're official, or will be as soon as you approve them tonight. But now you've got a, at least a half million dollars that right now, we don't know what to prioritize on, uh, for the, for the upcoming season. And so, um, you know, again, I, my suggestion is that we have, you know, Andy, you know, if, 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 uh, the board is comfortable, we'll send you what Andy's brought us. And then we'll take another look at it and just say, you know, okay, what's the criteria used? Um, here's what we would suggest that you do in, in this rank priority. Uh, me, I don't know if you want to bring it to the committee to start with, or bring it to the full board. That's the direction that I think we need. Uh, but we, we need to, we really do need to, uh, push our efforts forward here, because it's, time is of the essence.
Yeah, I agree with that. Um, that we, you know, we did task you with a five-year budget in June, and, um, we talked about needing to put something, some dollar amount into that budget, um, that, that we can still maintain a balanced budget to in it. Um, so I think my perspective to get it, the conversation started, I like number two, like a 500, half a million per year over five years, not impacting, um, you know, classroom, but just a way that we can start looking at, um, getting some of these prioritized. Because we haven't funded long-range facility plan in, in many years. We have a maintenance budget, but not necessarily a long-range budget. Um, and so I would like to see that, um, you know, I think number four is kind of, you know, everything we want, but not, not necessarily the, we need to put some kind of constraints around. And if something comes up that's more than 500K, it's an emergency. We do have our fund balance to potentially look into as well. Um, so that's what I would like to see. And then we can start building kind of our budget around that. Um, is the facility committee okay if, if Andy and Patrick come up with a 500,000 a year or a five-year kind of plan?
I liked what Andy did give us when we, um, he handed out to us. So I think he's probably sort of prepared to do that.
Okay.
Is that this purple sheet?
This is just one piece of what he did. He did this for every single school. So-
I mean, the downside to that is someone's filtered it. So you don't get that raw list to look through. The positive side is you don't get that raw.
Yeah. We, we did, we did look at that raw list.
We did.
I mean, I felt pretty confident with what Andy gave us, especially like priority one for each school. It seemed, I thought it seemed reasonable.
I agree with that, but I think as we got further down, I think, I think I started, as I just pointed to Susan, for installing glass wall.
Right.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. And you know, there was a lot of things on that list that I think number one would still be good for, because there were several things that looked like, you know, the home and school associations, the foundation could probably step in and fund.
But most of these things aren't pretty things. They're-
No.
They're caulk and doors and windows.
There were some things, like some athletic type things, and there was for like the orchestra needed storage and things like that.
So that's where I think we probably need a number one, what we didn't touch on yet, is I think that's something, and I don't know that we're the right group for it though either, because I don't know that we know what academic things that this school district really needs.
And what I would do is I would, you know, ask Kelly to champion those efforts, uh, which we're already doing to a certain degree. Uh, you may not just be aware to the degree of which we are working on them. And so I guess we'll, we'll bring that forth as well. And, um-
I guess some direction on that would be like five or six ideas for each school.
Well, I don't think we were asked to give non-facilities update of things to the home and school. I think that there are some lesser, you know, less expensive things that we know, you know, like instrument storage at Reagan, I think, was one of them, and it was going to cost $20,000. That's probably not something we're going to get to from a facility standpoint, because it's really not, I mean, it's important, but it's not as important as maybe, you know, the back parking lot at Orchard Lane or here at Elmwood that is crumbling. Um, and it's going to cost a whole lot more money. But it's something that maybe the home and school could fund. So I think it's really just identifying the things on our huge list that would be of a price range that a, a parent organization could afford and could potentially say, hey, we'll take that off your plate, and we'll figure out a way to come up with the money. So my issue, um, with number two, um, is not, not that I don't want Andy and Patrick to do it, because I certainly do. I just think 500,000 is not enough. Um, looking just at roofing and paving, we saw that there was about $2 million per year over the next five years of roofing and paving work that we should be doing. Um, so if we limit it, you know, not to say that it won't all be funded, but I really want to look at what is needed, not just what projects do we think we could get done. Like, if, you know, if you're looking at your house, you don't just only consider, you know, $20,000. If you actually have to replace such and such in the coming years because it's going to stop working, or whatever, you really have to look at, you know, what are the needs of your house, not just what can I afford comfortably within my budget? We may need to give up some other things to take care of some of the buildings. We don't want to end up with our buildings crumbling around our kids because we've ignored them too long. And then they're just going to cost, you know, way more further into the future.
I guess that's my concern with that list that we've looked at, though. There really isn't anything that's, the building's crumbling. I mean, a lot of it's parking lots, and that isn't the structure of the building. A lot of it is other-
Right. But it is something that has to be fixed. If kids are playing on parking lots that are falling apart, that's a problem. And we can't just ignore it because it's not part of the building. I mean, it still needs to be done. And looking at this list for Elmwood, it's not cheap. It's, you know, half a million dollars just to pave a section of the parking lot. That, that is something we need to make sure we're looking at and not saying we're only going to spend half a million dollars a year, or we'll never get it all done.
Can, I have a question for Patrick. Um, there is a, when you did your, um, presentation on different funds that districts segregate funds, and I think you said, I want to say it was like Fund 46 or something that you have to-
Forty-one.
Forty-one for capital, long-term, like 10-year plan-type items for capital improvements? I wonder if, as a district, we could prioritize like this extra savings that we're seeing, you know, this year. Could we, can we, as a practice, sort of funnel that into a Fund 41 balance so that we can start funding some of these long-range plans? Do you know what I mean? So that we can kind of, instead of, you know, waiting for, I don't know, the money fairy?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, one thing I don't want to lose sight of though, because I'm listening, and it's as if we've done no facilities. We've done a heck of a lot in the sum of many, many, many millions. And we did paving, and we did roofs, and, you know, maybe that the life is really short. I thought roofs lasted more than 10 years or five years. So I guess I, I would ask, did we not do some of that right? And let's go back and look at that. Is there warranty attached to some of this? Um, and then, you know, again, what sections really have to be done? Uh, and I, it's always nice to have everything done, but I haven't walked around some of these areas, but I, I would, as a board member, welcome that, to understand what some of these crumbling, when I hear crumbling, I envision, I don't know if that's true.
I think in the facilities folder that we have available to us is a report on the roofs and the pavement. And it'll say like when it was originally put in place and how many years is left on it. So there is actual like-
Excellent.
A listing of, of the current status of each of the roofs and pavement.
And each one of the buildings was sectioned off. They, they have sections on, on sections upon sections, so they know which part was done when. So it's not like, we're doing all of Elmwood. It's like this section of Elmwood, and this section of Elmwood, and this, and every single building was set up that way. I remember seeing the chart that Andy put together-
Okay.
-several years ago, that that's still in play when he did a 10-year analysis of where are we looking at for long-range plans. And, you know, the only difference now is it's three years later. Yeah, so he's got a plan, and he's got everything aged out to where he's at. And I know they've been doing maintenance on things that, you know, if there's a fix here or there, they've been doing it, but there hasn't been replacement. But it is, it is sectioned out.
Yeah. So one of the things Chris Lynn asked for when we did these tours of schools, right, to see what's falling apart, right, or what is in facility need. And we haven't seen that in these tours. Not that anyone wants to take time to show us the bad, right? I totally get that.
It's asphalt. Yeah, I mean, it's-
Didn't go actually see it.
Yeah.
It's outside. Almost all the issues are.
I'm just saying, we, I just want to be cautious when we say things are falling apart, and people are watching this, and they're not at the schools. Is it really? And perhaps it is. Then let's, I mean, those are a no-brainer to me. Let's deal with those first. But if they're not, let's be cautious how we say it. That's all I would ask.
That's been one of the conversations we've had, is a lot of the roofing stuff is, let's fix it before it's leaking, or before it's a problem. And it's like, in my opinion, let's not fix it until it's, I mean, every time you fix a roof early, you just shorten the life that you're going to get on the next one. It's three or four years prematurely. And in this budget crisis, I don't know that we should be fixing roofs. I mean, unless we know there's going to be a leak or something coming from there. But we patch roof, I mean, these roofs aren't like, all of a sudden, they rip open and water's pouring in here. And we get small leaks, they fix them, they patch them, and we go on our way. And we've, we've done that for a lot of these, but-
Yeah, I would agree.
And I think it's also, um, you know, part of the reason why we put together the plan as they are is because based on the life expectancy of some of the roof and asphalt, we also know that we can't afford it all. And so we have to chunk, chunk out these pieces of maintenance. And so, you know, so that we don't have all of a sudden multimillion dollars of needs in one given or two given years, as opposed to trying to balance out that, that hurt of expend, of expending. Um, you know, just like, again, if, if I wait till my roof leaks, but I know that I have HVAC issues that could be needed around the same time, sometimes you do have to be proactive and not reactive, because I know what my, my budget is. I've, I've got a budget to work within. And it's not to say that we're replacing things that don't need to be replaced. Um, you know, the other thing that I'll say, Susan, is I'm, I know that you were 19 when you got on the board, but I think you've been serving for 17, 18 years?
Yes.
And so, yeah.
I've seen it all reprieved.
I mean, that's, but that's your perspective, right? Because you, you have, you know, you've been, you've built, I've been on the board when you've built buildings. And, and so, um, you know, I think that that's, you know, just-
Thank you.
That maybe the full board may not have that same, uh, again, they didn't, not all started at 19. You know, Mitch is 25, so.
That's the fourth age joke.
Yeah, but you're getting it for young. I'm getting it for old.
No, that's what I said. You started at 19, so that makes you what?
Okay.
Thirty-six, right?
All right.
All right. Well, thank you for, um, for, you know, having the presentation and giving us an update on the facility committee. I know our committees are, committees are relatively new. We're still kind of in infancy stage of our committee. So just, um, you know, being patient and understanding that there's going to be some bumps and hiccups along the way. But ultimately, you know, they're set up to, um, to help us dig a little deeper into some of these, these issues. So do, facility committee, do you feel like you have enough to move forward? With your next meeting?
On the LED, no, I'm a little cautious. Um, this has been, I've been asking for this information for nine months now. And as everyone said, the business case that was put together was cobbled together. I mean, that's what I had to do, because I've not gotten the information that I've asked for. So that's my concern going forward.
What I would like to see, because I like what you put together, the only thing my, my skepticism period is that if there's, I, I need to see there's going to be a cost of insulation, whether our people who do it or somebody else that does it, that's the cost that we all need to see regardless, because that's, that's the actual cost. Because whenever you remodel anything, a contractor doesn't come by and says, you know what? This is the material cost. Well, how much is labor? It's not going to cost you anything. That never happens. So we need to have a cost for that, because it's, it's, it's part of it, whether our people do it or somebody else does it, there's a cost. Um, what I would also like to see is it divided out that if we can use, what we can use for Fund 50, what can be done with the Fund 50, 100% if that way it doesn't cost-
Say that again, sorry.
So like you said, where they prepare food, the kitchen, that's all going to be out of the, the Fund 50, correct? So separate that section out that is 100% not a cost out of our budget. You know, I think everybody here would get on board if we have enough money in that budget to do all the facilities with just that, without going into the, um, the eating areas where it's only going to be partial use. So take out the factor where it costs us anything out of our budget. I'm sure you'll have everybody on board with getting that done.
I haven't. So that's the problem.
Right, so like-
I asked, so I asked for that on November, no, sorry.
I think now, I mean, what we're doing is, is getting some consensus for the board.
Right. So my, what I would, what I'd like to see, because I like where you've gotten, you've gotten to, but all the costs, the cost of the fixtures, the cost of, um, the lights, the, the cost to install. I like option two, because option two just makes sense, because I've been in the industry, I've been doing it a long time. I know their savings in LED, it just makes sense. Um, doing the piecemeal doesn't make sense to me, only because if you're going to replace it, just replace it, get the cost savings. But I want all the costs involved. Um, also section it out so we know how much it's going to cost for one section, which is all the food preparation areas, where we know it's 100% from Fund 50, and it doesn't cost us a dime. And then know what your percentage will actually be, that it will cost us out of our budget for something else. Because to me, that is a, a need or a want, not a need, where the other ones, if it's being funded by Fund 50, and we have the money to do it, it doesn't cost us anything, then it can be done. Then we're seeing savings in all the district, in all the schools, if it's, if it's sectioned out that way. To me, I think if we have to do a partial, then that's more of a want than a need.
When you say a partial, what do you-
When we do the, when we do the cafeteria section, where you said we may only, we have to fund 30% of it, or Fund 50 does 30% of it. Okay? So if Fund 50's doing 30%, we're responsible for the other 70%. Well, right now, we're arguing whether or not we can do roof, or where we're going to find money anywhere. Uh, to me, that's, we have lights currently, so it's not really a need, that's more of a want.
But that's where I was going at. That's not factored in this calculation at all. All, all of these lights are going to have to be replaced relatively soon. So when a light's rated for 30,000 hours, they don't, the light, all the lights don't shut off at 30,000 hours. They start breaking at 25,000, and they start-
But, but if we have to replace them, we can replace them within what we're already doing, and then replace them as we go, as opposed to doing is one big-
I'm sorry, say that, you mean, you mean like put an LED light here when it burns out?
Yeah.
So that was my original proposal-
Well, no, what I'm saying is-
In May.
If we have to, if we have to replace a fixture, replace it with a new fixture as we go in the places where it's actually going to cost us money. But if Fund 50 can actually pay for it in all the food prep and kitchen areas, then let's get an estimate for that, see what it's going to cost the Fund 50, because then it's not out of our budget at all. It's out of a budget we're being asked to spend now. So I agree with you. Does that make sense?
So when you were referring to when lights go out, replacing them with an LED light?
Only in the places where we would be responsible for the cost.
So in the respect of time, can we take this offline?
Yeah.
Because we have a lot more agenda.
I don't know how we talk about it offline, though.
Well, right after this meeting, if the two of you want to talk for clarity.
Well, I'm looking for clarity from the board of what everyone wants to see for that.
I think we want the committee to go back and re-group.
And get them that cost.
Do you want all, do you want cafeteria broken out, and then you want all of the food prep areas broken out?
I think that's what we talked about. Yep. And, and I think, Mitch, if you're not getting information, I mean, I think that you can get information from, you know, Joe and Andy and, you know, whoever about the information that you need. Um, because you'll need that information to complete these questions, right? I mean, you'll need information on all of our facilities for the cafeteria areas and the food prep areas. You'll need to know what like the bulb counts are, right? And that's what you're looking to get, I think, right? So as long as we, you know, I, I have faith in administration that they'll get you that information, um, and that you can, it'll help to finalize what the proposal is and what the final numbers are. So I think you need that information, and they'll get it for you. Right? So let's-
All right.
Yeah.
Yep. We'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. Are there any items that should be pulled out for separate consideration? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Kurth, and a second by Ms. Manley to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Hands down, all opposed. Onto our regular agenda. The first item is to discuss, accept audited financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2019.
So I would invite our, the board's auditor, uh, Mike from Feld Schumacher and Company. And he has provided a summary that should be in front of you all. So whenever you're ready.
Uh, Joe, good evening, everybody. So as he said, I'm Mike Sama from Feld Schumacher. I'm a newer partner with the firm. I've actually been auditing this district for 11 years, so pretty familiar with, uh, the goings-on. Obviously, there's been a lot of changes, as you all have been talking about this evening. Um, so the first thing is just a summary that I have to kind of lay out the main takeaways from the audit here. So, uh, point one, the audit report contains an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements, meaning the statements fairly present the financial position and results of the year's operations. Number two, the government auditing standards report on internal control and compliance over financial reporting identified two deficiencies in internal control, which I'll talk about what those are a little bit later. And then, uh, number three, the single audit report on internal control and compliance over major federal and state programs contains an unmodified opinion and did not identify any deficiencies in internal control. And finally, our audit letter to the board addresses our responsibility as auditors and what you can expect from an audit and the financial statements. Uh, it states that there are no disagreements with management. Uh, we had no difficulties in performing this year's audit. All right. Um, so on page two, I'm just going to kind of summarize the main numbers. This is very much condensed, so it's not going to be to the level of detail you're probably used to in your budget discussions and things like that. Um, so starting at the top with the governmental funds. So the total current assets, 18,990,170. Total current liabilities, 4,675,497. Fund balances, 14,314,673. Total liabilities and fund balance, 18,990,170. Next statement, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances. Uh, again, this consolidates everything together, so, um, this number probably won't be as recognizable to you. Uh, revenue, including debt and lease proceeds, 78,507,952. Total expenditures, 78,872,802. So there was a decrease in fund balance of 364,850. Next, we have the district-wide statements. These include all of the buildings and various assets and debts of the district. Those are not included in the first set of statements. So the statement of net position, total current assets, 18,990,170. Net capital assets and deferred outflows, 85,627,520. And so the total assets are 104,617,690. Total current liabilities, 9,455,656. Non-current liabilities and deferred inflows, 69,743,065. Net position, 25,480,000. Net position, $25,418,969. And then the total liabilities and net position, $104,617,690. And then we have the statement of activities. So the total revenues, $65,282,338. And expenditures, $65,521,088. Total decrease in net position, $238,750. I will now summarize the general fund budget to actual final numbers. So the revenues, including lease proceeds in the final budget, $53,235,936. The expenditures, including transfers, were $53,225,733. So the final budget showed a surplus of $10,203. And the actual results in the general fund, and I think this is what Joe was alluding to before, the, this number. So, the revenues were $53,765,229. The total expenditure is $52,292,636. So the actual results showed a surplus of $1,472,593. And then finally, for the fiduciary funds, these are the student activities. The balance in that fund is $358,915. So, anyone have any questions on those summarized numbers? Okay. So then to touch on the, the findings. The first one is just a required finding based on auditing standards when a district does not prepare their own audited financial statements. Roger used to do this, and Pat, like most school districts, decided not to because it's, quite honestly, it's not very easy, and it's time-consuming, and it's kind of a pain. So, he, he didn't do that, so, but we have to cite this, it's just required. It's not a big concern on our end that districts don't do this. None that we work with do this, so this was the only one. He, he liked to do that for whatever reason, and, you know, that's fine. But, the second finding, however, is, was a little bit of an issue. It seems to be remedied for this year based on my conversations with Pat. Due to, it seemed mostly staffing challenges in the business office. It led to basically a lot of the account reconciliations and, you know, main kind of closing of the books wasn't able to be done in a timely manner. And so as a result, that's considered a deficiency because it just leaves opportunities for errors or fraud to occur when there's not timely reconciliations. In talking with Pat, they have replaced some of those positions that were not there when these things were occurring.
Every single one.
So there you have it. And I, I think things will be fine going forward, from everything I can tell. Plus, they're switching to Skyward, which is a lot easier and more user-friendly. So yeah, does anyone have any questions on that part? Okay. So I would just say thank you to Pat for helping us wrap up the audit, and thank you to everyone here for listening to that. Yeah.
Speak to that where you said it's deducted from the wall, the wall comes out?
Yeah, so we, we anticipated the surplus to be, you know, what it, what it, what it was validated tonight to be. How we got there were, was due to freezing budgets last year. You know, even after we, the board had approved budgets, internally we froze budgets, and we cut back on spending, you know, even though budgets had, the budget had been approved. We then had made some changes, you know, as attrition occurred during the school year as well, that allowed for some savings, and so, and then we trended positively in health insurance. And being self-funded, you know, they're true costs, they're true dollars to the district. So that's how we ended up with the surplus as it was. You less approximately $750,000, which is about half of what we anticipated the Eich wall and windows to be. So $750,000 of the work that has been done is not factored in here. So we needed to utilize dollars from fund balance in order to account for that. And so, and we end up at this point with a surplus of about $700,000.
It's important, I think, for everybody to understand that the audited financial statements are a snapshot of June 30th, 2019. So, the invoices that we had, for example, for the repairs to the Eisenhower wall, were after June 30th. And so, we can't re, even though we were going to use that surplus for that purpose, we can't reflect that in the financial statements because it happened after that moment in time that the financial statements are.
Does that answer your question, Susan? Yep.
All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is the-
So we would like the board to accept the-
We do the motion, yep.
Yep.
I move to accept the audited financial statements for the end, year ended June 30th, 2019.
A motion by Mr. Kurth, and a second by Ms. Manley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Hands down, all opposed. Motion passes. Now, we can move on to the data update and from district school report cards.
Yeah, what we'd like to do is actually, we'd like to move this to a different meeting, just given where we're at with time. Not to say that it's not important. You know, just to sum up, you know, our district continues to be one of about 40 districts to significantly exceed expectations on the school, or the district report card, and that our, our schools either significantly exceed or exceed expectations based on that accountability system. But, we'll get into more details some other time. And so, therefore, we'd like to move into the, the next presentation, item C, on naming rights and sponsorships. Really, I don't want to, the majority of this presentation is actually the same as it was. If you had a chance to look at it, really what we're looking at is, you know, there are many reasons why we should consider doing this. You know, our, you know, but, but as far as the work that we do, you know, it's already being done in other places, and it's something that we should consider. And I apologize, but I'm just summarizing information you already had previously. We reviewed the, the spaces at the schools in the district, gathered data from other districts, and compared spaces within SDMB against each other. And then we determined like what type of rates would a sponsorship garner someone. We do know that at each of our schools, there are different opportunities. So, for example, at New Berlin West, we have a field house. At Eisenhower, we do not. At Elmwood, you know, we have certain things that Orchard Lane may not have. And so, again, we identified those differences at our schools. We identified a communication plan or slash marketing plan as, as far as what we could do in order to move this forward. And we've developed some marketing materials, and, and then, you know, essentially, you know, we want to just re-clarify that there are many things that inhibit us from being, from expecting a huge windfall in finances with regards to this. So again, this was something that the board prioritized based on the Budget Balancing Task Force's recommendation. And so, they recommended it, this was a priority that came from the board as a result of that. And so we're vetting that process. So essentially, what, what we are looking for is, or are, you know, our potential next steps are unless directed otherwise by the board is, you know, to create and develop a sponsorship guide, of which we already have a working draft on. Continue to create, develop marketing materials, of which, again, we're already doing. And then, we are already in the process, and I, you know, will, I, we do have a website that just needs to be turned on, that, that we can, that we can turn on. But essentially, we'll do what we can to promote sponsorships and naming rights. And I think the, the key piece is, you know, should we have a, you know, a, something that's, that's new, that's being built, that's when you're going to have the opportunity. Or, you know, should we get, you know, through the foundation, you know, or if the district does a capital campaign for what does some districts do for like, say, turfing some of our fields, at that point, you could have an opportunity that someone, say, you know, Holiday Wondercheck Attorneys, you know, want to sponsor half of a field. You know, that maybe we put, we put the, the, the name on the field, you know, for the naming right, you know, for, for a good, for a good, you know, I mean, for $500,000, that'd be great. So, so again, I, we're ready to turn those things on. And so really, at this point, it's, that's really all we can do. You know, you know, again, we're going to, we'll continue to work with Dave Cody at, you know, pushing things out as we can with Ann Worchold, or, you know, Patrick wherever we can as we have new, you know. But like, you know, some of the issues is that, you know, they're, you know, Mitch mentioned that some of the things that we're talking about for capital improvements aren't like these big, you know, um, they're, you know, we're not like building a new library or Performing Arts Center, or, you know, so it's tough to put a naming right, you know, on top of a roof, you know, unless, uh, who knows, you know, you never know. But, but again, we're ready to plug forward, and if the board has any other suggestions, I would ask that you please just email me with any suggestions you might have. But again, at this point, we're going to plan and, and go ahead and moving forward with, with, again, the, the sponsorship guide and, and the marketing materials and upgrading our website. And again, we're pretty close to having it ready to roll.
I just have one quick question. When we talked about this back in December, there was discussion around needing a policy related to naming. Is that something we're still thinking we need?
Yes, and so, again, I wanted to just plant this seed with the board, just like we did previously. We'll go back and look at the policy, and we'll bring it forth for a first read at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, the next item is the presentation on facility rentals.
Yeah, so I'm going to, again, fast forward to essentially the last, the last slide here that, you know, in our work and in our efforts since the last time we met, these are the things that, that we've talked about internally that we are going to be bringing more information to the board at the next meeting on. And specifically, you know, what this relates to is, you know, how do we maximize the, the space that we have and, and earn money as a result of that? You know, I know we, we got a little bit ahead of ourselves, you know, at the last meeting, and we took that into consideration, where, you know, you know, do we need to hire somebody to kind of help run this? What's happening, I mean, right now, we're doing it in a way that, that is, that works, but could it work better? And certainly Patrick's been involved in districts where it's worked better. But working better doesn't necessarily mean making more money. You know, so that's just something that, you know, again, we need to consider. But, you know, what, what, what we're learning along the way is that certain things that what sets us apart from other districts, or other districts apart from us, are things like, how long can they rent their facilities? So, right now, we are pretty well at capacity. Like you saw the gymnasium being used tonight, and I think it'll be used probably until right now, 9 o'clock, when we, that's when we ask everybody to leave our facilities. And I think at our secondary schools is a little bit later. But, you know, how much opportunity really is there in our athletic, you know, athletic areas? And so, one thing that separates other districts apart from us is that they can utilize fields longer. You know, when I say longer, I'm talking seasonally. So either earlier in the spring or later in the fall, because they don't have natural turf like we do. In, in some cases, lighting is something that, you know, for example, soccer fields. You know, our soccer fields are not lit, and so therefore, could they be used longer in other districts? Where, again, right now, we don't have that capacity, you know. Yes, we certainly do at our, at our, you know, our track stadiums and our, in our football fields, but, and we, you know, we maximize those, certainly. But those are some of the questions that we're starting to kind of trying to uncover what's, what's exactly at, you know, where, what sets us apart. You know, how much revenue are we bringing compared to other districts? Like, do we actually even have a problem? You know, and so like when, you know, if, if we're raising the most money of comparable districts around us, then what, what is our problem? And then, does it really make sense to continue to push this issue? But, you know, other things that we're talking about is capacity of our facilities. So again, you know, some of the things that we're finding is, really the capacity that we have is classrooms. Yes, how can we maximize that classroom space? Well, you know, colleges and universities are becoming smaller. You know, that now that you've got, you know, digital, you know, online learning, and so they don't necessarily need the physical space anymore. I remember when I was in college, I mean, or when I was even doing my master's work, like you could find a college in every strip mall. You know, it seemed like in every other strip mall. Well, now, they don't need them because all that stuff is being done online, you know, comparatively. And so, you know, other things to consider is, you know, right now, we have tiered costs for our feeder program. What we're finding is that some districts actually charge their feeder programs. That's, is that something that the board wants to do? You know, that's something that the, you know, we're going to bring forth and say, here's what other districts are doing, as far as it relates to that. And then, you know, how do our facilities compare to others, you know? And then, do we want to consider a facilities manager position or not? And, you know, what, what would be considered success? You know, this, this is something that, you know, struck with, struck a chord with us when, you know, Susan, as far as open enrollment, what's, how could it be successful? Well, we, we thought the same thing, like, well, what would that mean? Would it mean like certain revenue amount, or is it all about the dollars? Is it about, you know, having it be better for our staff? You know, our staff are working overtime, getting, you know, it's great that they're getting paid overtime, but they don't necessarily want to be here, you know, making that money. And so, there could be some burnout, you know, that's being experienced. And then is it better for our community? So, is, because it's better for our community, should we, you know, take that into consideration or not? You know, those are questions that we're, we're certainly looking at. And then, you know, one last piece is, you know, what, what some districts are doing or where there's opportunity here is, you know, considering alcohol on school grounds for special events that the foundation could host. You know, and again, now, now you're also talking about taking business away from some of our local, you know, partners. But, you know, one example that I can share with you is our football boosters do these huge, you know, kickoff, you know, kick, kickoff the season celebrations, and they're being done at, you know, at a place where we could, the school district could be, you know, netting the profit as opposed to somebody else netting a, a major amount of profit. You know, what would need to happen there is, we wouldn't certainly need a liquor license on behalf of the district because I don't think there's any licenses left in the city, or it wouldn't be worth it. But you could get, you know, occasional, like festival-type licenses. So, you know, I think of Seton Fest, or Holy Apostle has their celebrations, and for certain events, you can get a temporary license for special events. You know, I think about the fact that, yes, we're doing this big celebration at Whirly Ball for the foundation. Certainly, that's a cost to the foundation, but what if we, we do an event and do it differently, like at the PAC over at West? You know, again, these are things that, that could happen that I think we need to, you know, bring, we're going to bring this information to the board, actually not the next meeting, but the meeting after. Where, where we've got a pretty good lead on a lot of this information, but it's a matter of then pulling it all together and then putting it in presentation style back to the board. So, but, you know, we're really getting some good info about what other districts are doing, and, and, and I think, we think we're doing some good things, there's certainly opportunity. But then there's also, you know, the unintended consequence of changing things. And, you know, again, you think you want to garner the revenue just for the district, but then, does that upset a, a business partner that, that's used to doing that? Things like that. So, again, our, our goal is to bring this back to you in the second meeting in February with more detail, with some recommendations, and then certainly direction from the board, so that we can start pulling together the policies, and then start making things happen going into the next school year. For the sake of time, if you would just email me any comments, questions, or concerns related to this topic for us to either, you know, some things that you want us to further consider or ask other districts, please let us know.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a first read. It's a first read of Policy 6320, purchasing policy.
Yeah, so this is something that the Finance Committee has been working on, and I guess I'll hand it over to Krisnan, and, and/or Patrick to kind of talk about the, the adjustments being recommended.
Basically, this purchasing policy, we brought it to the Finance Committee because we felt that the purchasing policy that we had was a little outdated. And so, we went through the policy, we added some controls. It just increases in general sort of the oversight that the board has over the purchasing policy of the district. We gave this, the proposed purchasing, actually Amy curated sort of a, a starting spot for us with a new purchasing policy, Amy Crosby did. And we gave that to Patrick, and Patrick took, took some good edits to that- took some good edits to that as well. The committee arrived at this proposed policy unanimously, and so, I know that we're recommending it, but I'm not going to move it tonight, because it's a first read, so.
Yes, I'd say any questions you have on the policy, bring it up to the Finance Committee, but copy Joe as well on there, because he would have had some insight into it as well.
And Patrick.
And Patrick, yeah. Next item is the action items from closed session.
I'd like to approve the employment performance and compensation matters pertaining to staff as presented.
A motion by Mr. Kurth, a second by Ms. Manley. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Hands down, all opposed. Motion passes. Future meetings and dates, so the board meetings are generally held the second and fourth Mondays, beginning at 7:00 PM. Our next meeting is February 24th, that's at West. Our March meeting, on March 9th, will be at Orchard Lane in the gymnasium, and our March 23rd meeting will be at West.
And there's, there's also going to be a Finance Committee meeting on the February 24th at 5:30, immediately preceding that regular board meeting, yeah, just want to make sure that's out there.
Good job.
And then there-
Who's the committee chair for that, I wonder?
The February 15th event, we talked about, it's sold out, the Eisenhower 50th Anniversary Celebration, and then March 21st, at New Berlin West, is the Discover New Berlin, from 9:00 to 2:00 in the Field House. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kurth, second by Ms. Manley, to adjourn. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Hands down, all opposed, this meeting is adjourned.